Welcome, everybody, to the May 26 Cumberland School Committee meeting. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to state for the record that the Chair, Ms. Lisa Boio, is out today. She's traveling for business. Next item on the agenda, approval of the agenda, pleasure of the committee? So moved by Mr. Denon, second by Mr. Duffy, all in favor? Eyes have it, six-zero. Consent agenda, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, five-twelve-two thousand six, and the approval of the minutes?
Two thousand sixteen.
I'm sorry, two thousand sixteen. And approval of the minutes, executive session, five-twelve-two thousand sixteen. Pleasure of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mark Ferilio, second by Mrs. Teal, all in favor? Eyes have it, six-zero. Next item on the agenda is report out of executive session meeting for five-twenty-six-sixteen. So the report on executive session votes, and a vote to seal the minutes of executive session, pleasure of the committee? There were no, that's right, I apologize, there was no vote, so we're going to, well, we'd seal the minutes, so report our executive session. So, a motion by Mr. Demodica?
Second.
Second by Mr. Denon, so we don't need a vote on it? Okay. Yeah, okay, I apologize. So we need a vote to seal the minutes. So, pleasure of the committee, we'll start from scratch. Mr. Demodica, second by Mr. Denon, all in favor? Eyes have it. Thank you, you know, it's up to Mr. Mark Ferilio to make sure, keep me right on the straight and narrow when I have to fill in for the Chair, so we're good there. Thank you, Mr. Ferilio. All right, next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Salvatore, could you join me?
Yes.
Down below so that we can celebrate some wonderful work done by our people in our district.
Good evening, everyone. The first recognition that I would like to do this evening is the two thousand sixteen District Teacher of the Year. Let me give you a little background information on the Teacher of the Year. Every, every spring, the end of April, beginning of May, we get a notification from the Rhode Island Department of Ed asking us at the district to identify a person who we believe is deserving of Teacher of the Year recognition. So what we do as a district is we ask each of the principals to nominate an educator who they feel is deserving of this recognition. So, all eight of our principals nominate someone. And, you know, it's not an easy decision because there are a lot of talented teachers in this district, as you all know. So, we, we actually have a rather lengthy conversation around each of the candidates, and then we, we have a difficult decision to make, and we have to identify who we feel is most deserving of this, of this recognition, which is really something very special. So, it is my pleasure to inform all of you that the two thousand sixteen Cumberland Teacher of the Year is Nicole Franco. Nicole. Well, hold on, hold on, I gotta say some nice things about you. Okay, just, just a few things about Nicole. Well, let me, let me just share something that Mrs. Giroux, who was really disappointed that she could not be here this evening, she, she had a commitment with her own family that did not allow her to be here, she was disappointed, but let me just share a little paragraph here that, that I think, she wrote a lot about Nicole, but I think summarizes a little about Nicole and her teaching. Mrs. Franco is fun and engaging. Community school principal Cindy Giroux said, "Learning is planned, purposeful, and playful. There is no place for passive learning in Ms. Franco's classroom. Students are both the learners and the teachers because their voices are continually part of the conversation. All hands are constantly up in order to take part in whatever is happening on any given day. Mrs. Franco takes the time to know her students as individuals and support what is important to them." Now, I have had the opportunity to observe Mrs. Franco's class on a number of occasions, and, learning is hard, but learning can also be fun, and, you know, to see students, like, really enjoying the learning is, is a wonderful thing. She is innovative in her teaching style, students are actively engaged in helping one another learn, there's a lot of activity in her room, and it's just, you know, I was actually, one of the things I thought of was actually inviting some of the students from her classes to this so that they could do that celebration dance that they do after they have successfully done some, they actually have this, this little dance that they do to sort of celebrate the, the learning that takes place in the class. So, so they actually have several dances. So, she would do it.
Remember the firecracker?
All right, all right, all right, all right, and they do, they all do this, ready? Do it, do it, go ahead.
Ready?
Hold on. So that's, and I'll tell you, that's just one little thing, I mean, they have all kinds of songs that they sing, it's, it's a lot of fun. So, so not only is Nicole an exceptional teacher, and, you know, like, one of our goals is educate, as we talk about this all the time, is, you know, we want to differentiate instruction, not everybody is in the same place in their learning at the same time, so, you know, we are focused on standards, it's, it's really about helping students to be proficient on standards in every content area, and Nicole has devised this system that allows students to really track where they are in learning the standard, so you can, you, you could approach any student and ask them what standard they're working on and where they are in their learning, and they can tell you that, which is really an impressive thing. Nicole has also been involved in, in some of the initiatives that are taking place in the district, like, for example, you know how we're doing teaming in, at the elementary level, where we have, so Nicole is a fifth grade, she teaches math, well, so that this allows teachers to really focus on a specific area of expertise, so Nicole is the math person, another fifth grade teacher is the ELA person, another fifth grade teacher is the science person, so it allows the teachers to really focus their attention on a specific content area, because it's really hard to be an expert on everything. So, it was Nicole and Chris Brown who approached Dr. Thornton and I to really get the ball rolling on this team teaching thing, and now we're doing it district-wide. So, it really is a wonderful thing, Nicole is innovative, but you know what, the most important thing of all is, she's fun. She knows what she's doing, and she's a lot of fun, so thank you for the great work that, that you do here, and congratulations again.
I want to thank you guys for allowing us to do this, and thank you for letting me in the way I do, letting me participate in my class.
Okay, I, I had the pleasure of attending a presentation on internet safety, in fact, it was at Community School where I saw the presentation, and it's my understanding that the presentation has been done in other elementary schools, at the very least Garvin Elementary School, where McKenna Laverty goes to school, she's a fifth grader there, and, this, to me, which is this really cool presentation, McKenna, the fifth grade student, and her dad, Patrick, do an internet safety presentation, and I had the pleasure of seeing the presentation when I was at Community, and I must tell you, I learned a lot. You know, it's one of those things, you think you have a handle on things, but I learned that there were some things that, that I was doing while using the internet that, you know, could potentially expose some, you know, information that we don't want people to have access to. So, I just wanted to thank McKenna and Patrick for volunteering their time to do these presentations, which, you know, which was really impressive, and, so as a small token of our appreciation, we wanted to acknowledge and thank you for that, so please come on up so we can thank you for the fine work that you did, and we really appreciate it. And I also learned that, well, come on, let's take a picture. I also learned that McKenna has a rather extensive vocabulary, I, she used some words that, quite frankly, I didn't know the definition of, but, so she is, she is a really bright young lady, and I think a fine example of the students that we have in the district, so thank you both again. Up here, I'll, I'll just share one more thing with you that I think is really important before we continue on with the agenda. You all, have you all heard of Pennies for Patients? Right? So, you know, it is amazing how much money the Cumberland School District has raised for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and, you know, this is, this is a statewide initiative, and I'm sure it's more than just the state of Rhode Island, but we get these statistics on the money that is raised by our schools, and of the, of the top ten fundraising schools in the state, we, three of our schools are in the top ten. The, the, the school that raised the most money in the state of Rhode Island for the Lymphoma, the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society was Cumberland High School, they raised ten thousand dollars, and, you know, which is amazing, ten thousand dollars! So, you know, we, we have some high school teachers here, but I, I've, I've heard some of the really clever competitions that the teachers have with one another, and some of the, some of the clever things that, that they, they have students do to raise money, and, you know, things like, you know, if we can raise X number of dollars, then the test that I was gonna give you tomorrow will put it off for a couple of days, sort of a thing. So, so it becomes a little bit of a competition between the, you know, between the teachers and the classrooms as well, so, I mean, healthy, fun competition. The, so number one in the state was Cumberland High School, number two in the state was Community Elementary School, they raised eight thousand three hundred fifty dollars. And sixty-six cents. And also in the top ten was North Cumberland Middle School, they raised three thousand four hundred forty-five dollars and fifty cents. So, needless to say, I mean, it's pretty impressive, that's a lot of money, that doesn't include all of the other schools that also raised money, but it's really nice. Our total, at least for the, for the top ten, was twenty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars and sixteen cents, that's a lot of money. So, thanks to those schools for their fine work. Okay, all right, we have a few other things to do, but I can go, we can go back up, and we'll, we'll continue on with the agenda, so just bear with me for one second.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, and thank you again to Mrs. Franco and McKenna Laverty and your dad, you know, appreciate the hard work and all your, I'm sorry, Patrick, thank you, all your hard work, this is, everybody likes to correct me when I'm, when I'm up here, which I'm okay with that, I like, you know, being proactive. All right, Mr. Mitchell, is that everything on your superintendent's report?
Yes, Mr. Salvatore, we do have some presentations, though?
Okay.
That need to be made.
All right, let's go to that.
And I know that Ms. Brady is here to do a presentation on the middle school student Quebec trip, and I think she might have some students here too that might help her out at some point.
Excellent.
Bonsoir, messieurs dames, on veut présenter le voyage à Québec. Don't worry, I'm not gonna do the whole thing in French, and I have a whole lot of help here, so if Mr. Chandler can get this presentation started, and I will hand it over to the students who are gonna tell you about their experience.
So our presentation is on the Quebec City trip of two thousand sixteen, as experienced by both the students of NCMS and McCoura Middle School.
During the Quebec trip, we all changed in incredible ways. Upon viewing French culture, our eyes were open to the world. We realized that there is a whole other world around us that is very different from the United States. Many kids will not leave the United States in their lives, and this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. No one will forget how much fun they had and how much they learned in Quebec.
Some of the things that happened during the Quebec trip included dog sledding, dancing at the Sugar Shack to traditional fiddle music, tubing at extraordinary parks, tobogganing, touring the upper and lower city, snowshoeing, tasting exotic food, and learning about the Quebec legends through word carvings.
In Quebec, when we weren't doing recreational activities, we also were learning. We learned about the Battle of Quebec, which was between the American Continental Army forces and the British defenders of Quebec City early in the American Revolutionary War. We also learned that Champlain found Quebec in sixteen oh eight and began his colony there before the British. Another, one of the recreational activities we did was snowshoeing. It was a difficult task, but fun as well, because we got to experience what some people do in Quebec for fun.
The observatory, we went to a very, very tall building, it was the tallest building in Quebec City, and we had a great view of the entire city, there was also plaques and little cards that taught us about the history, like he said, the Battle of Quebec City and other historical facts that followed, and it was just a great view, you could see the entire city, you could see miles away, it was, it was pretty cool.
While in Quebec City, we were able to experience the French language and culture firsthand. This trip has given us an opportunity to visit places that were previously only accessible through a textbook. We tried new things while we were in Quebec City, like new foods and new activities, and we were able to apply the skills we learned in the classroom to the outside world.
So, we went to the Ice Hotel or the Hotel de Glace, and it was pretty cool, it was an entire hotel made out of ice, and we toured the entire hotel, looked in a couple rooms, and they actually had a slide, which is pretty fun, so.
Another activity we did was going to the Sugar Shack, which, one of our tour, tour guide told us of the experience is she had at the place, so it's, it's a place that multiple people go to on variety of times. We heard traditional Quebec music, we danced, we, we also learned how they make maple sugar, like, one way they do it, they put it in snow, they roll it, and it cools down, and then you're allowed to eat it there, so it's, it's good to learn.
So, all the activities that we previously talked about, they were all very fun, one that we haven't talked about is tobogganing, that was on the last night, that was probably the, the peak of the trip, because we went extremely fast down these giant hills with our friends, and it was, it was a great time. Combined with all of the other, all the other fun activities, it was a great time, we had a bunch of fun, and it was very fun just to sing and dance and just have a good time with our friends in a, in a place other than the United States, with a different culture and background.
Some of the highlights and outtakes during the Quebec trip were having the freedom every day to explore and shop with your friends, getting to see the beautiful city of Old Whaled City, meeting new people and making new friends, getting to try traditional Canadian food such as poutine, dancing at the Sugar Shack and making memories.
Merci.
Thank you to the school committee, superintendent, principals, and chaperones for making this trip possible.
Nice job, guys. It really is an amazing experience where the students really get to practice their French, and they get to really see a, a culture other than, than American culture. I have people come up to me all the time in Quebec City while we're there, ask me who we are, where we're from, and thank us for visiting their beautiful city. So, our students really reflect the, their parents' values, our values as a community, and, and they really bring in a phenomenal experience home with them, so thank you for making it possible for them.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madame Brady. I remember a little French from my high school days, very little French from my high school days. So, we, we have a couple of other presenters to, who are here to share their experiences on trips that have been taken recently. Ms. Audrey Berthium, an English teacher at the high school, is here to report on the recent grad night that seniors took to Disney World.
All right, Grad Bash, well, Grad Night, which is now called Grad Bash, is recognized across the USA, and it's when Universal Studios opens its doors at night, seven PM to two AM, for just graduating seniors from all over the country. Cumberland High School has participated in this trip since nineteen eighty-nine. This year, we took nineteen students and three chaperones to Orlando on April fourteenth to the seventeenth. We left here from the Wellness Center on an academy bus at two forty-five in the morning for our early five forty-five flight out from TF Green. Mears Transportation provided our transportation to and from the airport, as well as from our stay at Pop Century Resort. During our stay there, transportation was just provided by the Disney Ground Transportation. Over the four-day trip, the students had the opportunity for a number of exciting experiences. They visited Magic Kingdom, Animal Kingdom, Epcot, Hollywood Studios, and they also participated in the special grad night event, which actually gave them an extra park to attend to. They also had the option to go to Typhoon Lagoon or Blizzard Beach if they so chose to. It became evident that over the course of the, the four days that we were there, students started to take on more responsibility, they became a little more independent, and it's really nice to see kind of where they started, it might be their first trip that they've taken, for some of them, we took first-time flyers, we took people who have been to Florida but not with their parents, so it was a nice experience. At each nightly curfew, students were required to take a breathalyzer test to ensure the safety of all of our trip members, and each day and night was met with success. We just encountered many issues, needing sunscreen, needing a Band-Aid, losing a room key, but that's usual for us, we're used to that. We were always complimented, particularly in the airport and the hotel, on the mature behavior of our students. So overall, it was a success, and we're hopeful to receive approval for next year's trip, we're just still in the process of planning the dates and the times and the cost of that trip. Thank you. Any questions?
Excellent, I do, I do have a, I do have a question. So, the attendance, nineteen students and three chaperones, is that, is it up from last year or previous years, down?
That is actually a huge drop from last year, so last year, we took fifty-four students, and the year prior to that, we took sixty-seven.
Was there a reason, was it a cost increase?
We, I don't, I don't really know what the reason was, there were other trips available to the students within the same timeframe, so many other students opted to go elsewhere, but I don't really, there was no reason given to us necessarily, so we're hopeful that we have more this year. That was the lowest number, in the eight years that I've gone, that was the lowest number that we've taken.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent, glad it was a success.
Merci beaucoup. We, we also have Isabel Claro is here, Isabel is a world language teacher in the high school, and she's here to provide some information about the recent trip that she and several students from the high school took to Spain and Portugal.
Good evening. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the school committee and Superintendent Mitchell for approving this trip. It was a very successful trip, you would be proud of Cumberland High School students, they were very well behaved, in fact, the Explorica Tour Director, who was with us twenty-four hours a day, and deals with high school students from all over the country on a daily basis, was very impressed with their behavior and how respectful they were. And they were very appreciative of this trip, they, they had such a great time. In a moment, I'll show you a video that one of our students, she gave me permission to show it to you, but just a couple of the highlights, they, there were fourteen students all together and three chaperones, and some of the highlights were, they visited the Royal Palace in Madrid, they visited many cathedrals in Segovia and Avila, the Plaza Mayor in Madrid, the Plaza Mayor in Salamanca. We also visited Cumberland's sister town of Penavas del Castillo, who happens to be the town where my parents reside as well, and there, they did many cultural things, they saw a palace and a mansion in which there, they had women who were making cheese the traditional way, and the kids really enjoyed that, although many said, "I don't think I'm ever going to eat cheese again." But, they also visited a winery, they visited the local high school, and they sat in on an English language class, the culinary arts students prepared a luncheon for our students as well. What else did we do? We were hosted by the mayor of the town in, in the conference room at the town hall, and they were all given a welcome gift, and in fact, the mayor of Penavas del Castillo sent a gift for the administration of Cumberland High School. And I spoke to Principal Tenero, and we saw, we both agree that it was fitting to give the gift to Superintendent Mitchell, because Mr. Tenero has already received one from the Penava community here in Cumberland, so I'm gonna give this to you.
Plus, Mr. Tenero's Portuguese, so he's got a lot of the... It's cheese, thank you.
So it was a very successful trip, it was, I was very proud of the students using Portuguese and Spanish to order their lunch, their drinks, talk to the other kids in the town... lunch, their drinks, talk to the other kids in the town. They really enjoyed it, and in fact, you'll see a little bit of that in the video. The kids actually got to make bread the traditional way, where it's baked in a community stone oven. So, there was these three older women who volunteered their time and taught the kids how to make the bread, and let them put their hands in it and knead the dough, and they got to eat the bread after. And one of my students came up to me, and she said, "Mrs. Claro, this was a life-changing experience." So, I think they really enjoyed it, so I think, let you watch the video.
Excellent. All right, thank you very much. Very nice video. Does anybody in the committee have any questions? Excellent, thank you very much. Was the trip, was it part of a tour company?
Yes.
It was, okay. Excellent. So, with your trip, fourteen students and three chaperones, is that up from last year or is it down? The cost came up a little bit? Included all the meals and everything, though, correct? Okay. Excellent. All right, thank you very much. All right. Mr. Mitchell, we're all set on the superintendent's report?
Yes, Mr. Salvatore.
Excellent, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the chairperson's report, school-town collaboration, which I'm going to table, unless, Mr. Duffy, do you have something on it? Nothing? Okay. All right, excellent. We'll just let everybody pass here for a minute. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is reports of standing committees, payment of bills, Mr. Demodica.
Mr. Chairman, there are no payment of bills this time.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the fiscal management subcommittee update, Mr. Demodica.
Mr. Chairman, the committee did meet tonight. We got the business office monthly reports. We talked with representatives from Alphabet about the childcare services. The business manager talked about the rental of the pool facilities, about renewing the contract, and we have a resolution coming forward tonight about switching to Cox Communications for the district's phone system. And finance subcommittee did talk about funding girls' hockey next year, make it a varsity sport, and that would be handled by the superintendent's office, how that gets funded. The other thing is, we had a brief discussion on the mayor's proposed school funding for 2016, 2017, and that's the report.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica.
Actually, I just need to make one note.
Please.
We did get a note from Mr. Pignano in regards to preschool tuitions, they are gonna go up to 225 and 265.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. What were they?
I believe, Mr. Pignano, do you have an idea what the preschool tuitions were last?
Are you?
No, last year, not the current year? So, we will have a resolution coming forward at our next meeting to make that official, but this at least gives the parents notice that it will be going up.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Any questions in the committee? Next item on the agenda, policy and procedures, subcommittee update, Mr. Fiorillo.
Policy and procedures did not meet.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is achievement in communications subcommittee, Mrs. Teal. All right, thank you, Mrs. Teal. Next item on the agenda, budget task force update, Mr. Duffy. We have nothing? All right, no problem, thank you. Next item on the agenda, comments from the public. Anybody in the public like to speak, stand up to the microphone? All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, I believe, readings of policy, new policy, second reading, Mr. Fiorillo.
Yes, this is the second reading of I-10, the extracurricular school-sponsored overnight field trips, and also the J-24/G-16 service animals in schools policies. Just briefly, we had already read these at our last full meeting. The service animal in schools is just for the event in the future that a teacher or a student would require a service animal, so now we have a policy for that. And again, this is for service animals, not therapy animals. And the I-10 extracurricular school-sponsored overnight field trips is just to differentiate between trips such as the trips that we heard about tonight, going to Spain, Portugal, and Canada. These are the club trips from, say, athletics and academic clubs, choirs and band and cleft singers, and just a little, because it's, there are some differences in the way they travel, we had to create a separate policy to address those. And both policies were worked on from teachers, special education administrators, and as such, and they all passed with the support of policy.
Mr. Fiorillo, could you tell us what the service animals are in J-24, please?
Certainly. These would be properly trained, as laid out in the ADA federal regulation, they include dogs and miniature horses.
Thank you. I always get a kick out of that. Reminds me of the commercial on TV, not in a bad way, I think, you know, I think it's good that a miniature horse can provide a service. All right, back to the agenda. Any public comment in regards to I-10 and J-24? All right, we'll close that public comment. New, next item on the agenda is new business. Discussion in or vote on teacher dismissal recommendations, pleasure of the committee.
As we all know that this was discussed in executive session, I'd like to make a motion to follow the administration's recommendation of the three dismissals.
Thank you. Mr. Fiorillo makes a motion, second by Mrs. Teal. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Eyes have it, six-zero. Next item on the agenda, discussion in or vote to rescind teacher non-renewal recommendations.
I'd also like to make a motion to rescind, to support the administration to rescind the non-renewal notifications of the forty-nine teachers that were listed.
Mr. Fiorillo makes a motion to rescind the forty-nine teacher non-renewal. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Denon, second by Mrs. Teal. All in favor? Aye. Eyes have it, six-zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the discussion in or vote to approve the girls' varsity hockey funding, funding 2016, 2017 school year. Pleasure of the committee.
Mr. Chairman, this was brought on my behalf and went through finance. It was approved in a three-to-zero vote. What we would be doing is not actually the funding portion of it, we will be accepting girls' varsity hockey for next year as a varsity sport, and the superintendent's office and the business manager will handle the funding of it. They've come in front of us a few times now and asked us to fund the program. Certainly, we didn't like the way it got started, in that the school department was on the hook for funding it, but it's time to move on, and I would move the passage that we accept girls' hockey as a varsity sport for the 2016, 2017 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Mr. Demodica votes to move passage. Do I have a second for discussion? I have a couple questions. Second by Mr. Duffy and Mr. Denon. Mr. Demodica, so, I do approve this also, but my question is, how will this relate to the girls' varsity hockey? I know now it's shared with Lincoln and Mount St. Charles, so how is that gonna work?
Mr. Chairman, it would continue to be a co-op sport, because we don't have enough kids for our own team, so that would continue with Mount doing the bulk of the work. But, you know, Mr. Campanelli, Matt Campanelli came in front of finance. I mean, other than the funding of it, he was responsible for the health certificates, he was responsible to make sure the grades were up, and he had to deal with Mount, not on a daily basis, but he was our go-between, and Rhode Island, it's a scholastic league, looked at Cumberland as the insurer as well, and so, it's come time. The time is to move on. We don't know exactly how many kids will be here yet. Mr. Mitchell did bring up the fact that they had seven kids graduate, there were five freshmen. We could end up getting a few more kids that want to come to Cumberland High School, because we now are from the girls' hockey team.
Excellent. All right, for the record, Mr. Demodica, let it be known that Mr. Campanelli is athletic director. And my next question is, when this comes available next year, what if all of a sudden we get thirty girls that want to play?
That would be great, and we just, I think...
Do we break the connection with Mount St. Charles?
I would think we would want to break the connection with Mount St. Charles. I don't think thirty kids plus their kids would be enough. I don't think 30 kids plus their kids would be enough. But...
And it would turn into a coordination of ice time? I'm just kind of curious.
We have, you know, 30 kids that we're going to get school funding for as well, so if they all come to Cumberland, so...
Excellent.
Let's see where it goes. I've been told one girl got a scholarship already. And if one kid gets a scholarship next year, we're doing our job.
Just cause.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Demodica. So I've got a motion. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? We have one nay. So five yea, one nay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the discussion and/or vote to approve resolution SCR 2016-06, the Cox Communications Phone System Upgrade. Pleasure of the committee.
Mr. Chairman, this was heard in finance. We discussed this back in March when Mr. Chandler had made a presentation to us about going with Cox Communications. This is to upgrade the entire telephone system for the district. We're going to fiber optic as well. They will be responsible for the equipment. And the finance subcommittee voted three to zero to approve this. This would be an amount for a five-year contract, which we've checked with the attorney, our attorney, and we can do a five-year contract. It would be waiving the installation charges because we do it in five years. And the amount is not to exceed $186,030. And that's over five years. I move passage.
Thank you, Mr. Demodica. Mr. Demodica moves passage to approve resolution SCR 2016-06. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mark Fiorillo. All in favor? Eyes have it, five, six, zero. Thank you. I'm going to have a little fun up here sometimes, too. All right, next item on the agenda, discussion and/or vote to approve new policies, second reading of the I-10 extracurricular school-sponsored overnight field trips. In the... We'll take one at a time. So pleasure of the committee?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the I-10 extracurricular school-sponsored overnight field trips. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Denon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Eyes have it, six, zero. Next item on the agenda is discussion and/or vote of the J-24 service animals in schools, cross-reference G-16. Pleasure of the committee.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Denon makes a motion to approve J-24 service animals in schools. Do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
Second by Mr. Fiorillo for discussion.
I just wanted to point out that because it's got to address both students and faculty, that's why we're having, we're actually doing it as two separate policies. Policies actually read exactly the same. It's just that it's J-24 for the students and G-16 for the faculty.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo. All right, do I have a... So we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Eyes have it, six, zero. Thank you very much. Discussion and/or vote to approve overnight student field trips. Item one is the grade seven student trip, Washington DC, November 2016. Mrs. Coughlin, I take it that you're up here to speak about that?
You mean 2017? Oh, this is 2016.
Yeah, 2016. Mrs. Coughlin, could you please introduce the people? Actually, I know one of them already.
To my left is Paula McMillan. Paula McMillan is our IT coach. She will be one of the advisors for the Washington DC trip. And to my right, Mr. Sean Connolly. He's a seventh grade social studies teacher. He will also be assisting Mrs. McMillan in the organization of the trip.
All right, excellent, thank you.
Cumberland grad.
Oh, I thought he was in seventh grade. I thought he was in seventh grade.
I meant you, Mrs. Coughlin.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Everyone in this room is.
I know Sean and I know his sister Carrie very well, so... Thank you, all right.
I first want to thank you for the approval of our prior year's trip. So we are here again to request approval for the seventh grade trip to Washington DC. The trip is to take place during Veterans Day weekend, November 10th through 13th of this year. As I speak to you and give you the information about the trip, we do have some photos of last year's trip that we'll be running through. So if I get boring, you know where you can look. But the trip begins on a Thursday. So Thursday would be the day that the students miss school. Friday is Veterans Day, and they return on Sunday. As I stated, the coordinators of the trip are Paula McMillan and Sean Connolly. And this year, we have made the decision, and requesting your approval, to switch tour companies. We are interested in having Jump Street Tour Company take care of the logistics of the trip for us. This is the same tour company that does our Quebec trip. We've had a lot of success with this particular tour company, and we are excited to start this relationship with them as well. The reason for the change in tour company is the food choices in our prior trips have become what we thought was to not be ideal. Many, primarily food court experiences. By the end of the weekend, kids were begging for a vegetable because they were tired of the fast food. So certainly, Jump Street was able to offer us better food options through the restaurants. So that was one of the driving forces in changing food companies, tour companies. And if you notice from the Portugal trip, it is all about the food because there was a lot of food in that video. Also, Jump Street offers an online payment portal, which is much easier to handle, not only from the school perspective. It takes it off of our plate. But also, the parents have a direct contact with someone.
What is the cost, Ms. Coughlin?
The cost for this trip is $559. That is an increase from last year. But we do feel with the benefits of this particular tour company and the guides, the quality of the guides that we have had on the Quebec tours, and the relationship that we have formed with the director of the company, that this is a much better option for our families.
Is there any option of fundraising for the students? Is that an option, like how the Quebec trip has it?
So historically, we have not used fundraising efforts to support this trip. That's something that we have not, that we wouldn't consider if the need arises. But historically, we have not done any fundraising for this trip.
My one more question is, how many students did we have last year? And do we know how many ballpark this year?
We... Last year, we had about 120 students. I'm sorry, 160 students attend between both schools. And I want to clarify that I am requesting approval for the trip for both McCourt Middle School and North Cumberland Middle School. What we intend to do this year is to start with two buses. That would be 98 students for North Cumberland Middle School and one bus of 49 students for McCourt Middle School. What we did last year, we ended up adding a bus when the interest for the trip did warrant that.
Excellent. Any questions from the committee? Were you done, Mrs. Coughlin? Was that... Okay, that was it.
Any other information?
Any questions from the committee? Excellent, yeah. I hear nothing but positive when people return from this trip. So it's a great trip.
The kids love it. The staff loves it.
Pleasure of the committee.
Miss Connolly loves it.
Excellent.
Make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Fiorillo and Mr. Denon. Second by Mr. Duffy, all in favor? Aye, eyes have it. Congratulations, have a great time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the grade eight student trip, Quebec City, Canada, January of 2017. Excellent, you want to give us a little overview? Well, we know the overview, but I'm not sure if you want to add anything else? Is there any... My question is, is there any changes?
There are not, other than minor changes to the... Minor changes to the itinerary based on student interest and activities that we've been successful with and activities that we, you know, felt like were not really the best things for our students to be doing. There's a slight increase in cost. And then because of the, again, the food, because of the new policy where chaperones need to be with students at all times, rather than having, we would have a free time that we would let them go to lunch on St. John's Street in Quebec. And that's now a violation of the school department's policy. So we are working with them to add in another lunch so that our chaperons don't have to spend too much time going for fast food, same deal. And they've been able to accommodate us. And we've also added in the Huron Village since the students no longer go to the Pequot Museum for the eighth grade.
What is the increase?
It is $779 this year, and I don't remember the exact price from last year.
Anybody in the committee, any questions? All right, thank you. Pleasure of the committee? Motion to approve by Mr. Demodica. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Denon, all in favor? Aye. Any nays? Eyes have it. Excellent. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, personnel recommendations, Mrs. Vogel.
I have two for you tonight. I have two retirements. I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the retirement of Lucille Lemos, paraprofessional at the Cumberland Preschool Center, effective June 30th, 2016, after 17 years of service. Emanuel Martins, custodian at community school, effective July 5th of 2016, after 11 years of service.
Did you say Manuel?
Manny Martins.
Oh, Manny.
Yeah.
Excellent, wow, he's retiring.
Well, technically, it's a resignation, but it's retired.
Okay, sorry. All right, pleasure of the committee?
Make a motion to accept.
Mr. Denon makes a motion to accept personnel recommendations as read by Mrs. Vogel. Do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Teal, all in favor? Aye, eyes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the school committee comments, school liaison reports. Mr. Fiorillo.
Last week, I had the ability to go to a seminar on concussions over at community school. That was put on by Danielle Jacinto, Jacinto, the nurse teacher over at community. It was a very informative seminar regarding concussions in school-aged children. They are planning on doing another one, this time maybe up here at the high school in the auditorium in the fall. So I would recommend that everyone can attend. This is something that affects, of course, athletes as well as elementary school children on playgrounds and cheerleaders, of course, also. So very important. Also, I, myself and Mr. Denon, got to see the rededication of the small cemetery that's right out here. It was part of a... Name of the girl who put it all together, Shelby Monally, I hope I pronounce that correct. It was part of her project dignity, which the rededication of the cemetery was the kickoff, really, for the new CHS archaeology club. They've been working with some area experts in the historical society on cleaning up some cemeteries and doing a little research on the people that are in them. So that's very exciting stuff. And I'd like to thank teacher Rod McGary, who volunteered to be the advisor for that club. It was a great, great presentation, and Shelby did a great job.
Thank you. Mr. Denon.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. The first thing, I wanted to thank Mr. Mitchell for what he did the other night at the budget meeting with the town. And actually, we had a bunch of administrators speak on behalf of the schools as well. I think I got them all, Dr. Santa, Mrs. Coughlin, Mrs. Malcolm, Mrs. Carbonic, Mrs. Giroux, and Mr. Tenraro. They did a great job in advocating for the schools and also giving an honest assessment of sort of what we lack in the schools. And I think that was, it was very refreshing to hear that. So I appreciate that, thank you. The second thing is actually a bit of personal news. I'm moving, so I need to resign from the school committee because I will no longer live in District Two. I'm moving to another place in Cumberland. So my kids will still go to the same schools. I'll probably sit out there, if I'm not over here at some point, and harass everyone here. It's my intention to keep working with the school committee as much as I can. That's going to be in early June, though.
All right, Mr. Denon, so you're not resigning tonight. You're saying you have the intention to resign?
Yeah, and I'll work with the chair on the actual date.
Excellent. Well, you're going to be missed, Mr. Denon.
Someone else will have to pick the desk.
Hopefully, you'll come back, so... Oh, we have Mrs. Teal, who's the former secretary of the school committee, so... All right, excellent. Anybody else? Mr. Duffy.
So I as well have some personal news. I as well am moving. But I am moving out of Cumberland up to Massachusetts. Date to be determined sometime late June, early July. So I'm hoping, I'm in an at-large seat, and I'm hoping that the town council will see the wisdom and the ways to slide Mr. Denon over to the at-large seat so we can keep the continuity on the school committee, which would then just leave the hole in the District Two seat. But again, I'm leaving sometime within the next four to six weeks. I'm not sure when, but I just wanted to let everyone know. And I'm as well going to work with the chair and the town council president of the town council to hope to make it an easy transition as well. Thank you.
So again, Mr. Duffy is not resigning tonight, but with the intention that it's coming down the line, saying, I'll take it to be done. Mr. Duffy, I have to say, as vice chair, you know, all of us, except for Mr. Denon, but Mr. Denon, we started four years ago, almost. That's what I'm getting to. But the synergy between everybody on this committee has really gelled, and everybody's a solid contributor. And, you know, we don't air our dirty laundry in public. And we, you know, we try to come to a resolution that effectively draws results on how it can benefit the children in this community, as well as the taxpayers, as well. So you will be missed, but I wish you well, you and your family and your endeavors in Texas, I mean Massachusetts, so... All right, thank you.
Just one more thing.
Yes.
I think I have to leave before you find the 50th way to pronounce my name.
He's harassed me for years when I was behind in the grill, so... All right, anybody else, school liaison?
I'd just like to say that I'm very sorry to see Mr. Denon leave. I suspect he'll be back, though. Mr. Duffy and I met sometime during the election process four years ago. And we very quickly, I think, found a common ground for what we wanted to be able to accomplish on the school committee. He will be missed. He brought a very unique viewpoint to this committee. And he has made the committee a better body by being on it. So he will be missed.
I agree. Mr. Denon, we'll miss you as well for the next couple of months. But we know you're staying in town, so I didn't want you to think I was being disrespectful. Mr. Mitchell, do we have... Oh, Mrs. Teal, did you say something? Mr. Mitchell, do we have executive session tonight?
No, we do not.
Excellent. Anybody else on the committee? All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is adjourned. Mr. Fiorillo makes a motion to adjourn.